Dilections to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and evergreen, justice for all.
Ms. Alling is here. Ms. Ballantyne?
Here.
Ms. Bash?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mr. Samuel Lamb?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Second. Let's vote. Perry seven zero. Next, public announcements, recognitions, and upcoming events.
We have had a wonderful time since our last board meeting. A lot of great things to announce for those that didn't already know. We'll start off with the high school cheer team. They won for the small school co-ed teams, the state championship, on February twenty-second at DeForest High School. So if you've ever seen them, whether it's basketball games, football games, they do an awesome job. And our student section and our parents do go along with them. You don't see that with every high school cheer team. Sometimes they're sort of ignored, but they do a great job. And state champs this year, so that's fantastic. Also had three, three state champions on our Division Two wrestling team. They are Colin Frye, Colton Bulley, and then Danny Heiser. If you were watching any of that, you can watch online. Just a lot of really spectacular coverage of Evansville Wrestling and very positive comments coming out at a statewide level, obviously. In addition, Danny was named one of the wrestlers of the tournament. I have a picture in there. I think actually Kendall took that of the big screen at the Kohl Center. He is a four-time now state champion and I believe has the, a tie for the all-time wins record in the state of Wisconsin. So just fantastic. And again, very humble. I saw it was, it was Colin yesterday with Lunch Pals. He was with his mom. And I asked him, and he was just, again, very humble about what we've done. And he's got a couple more years ahead of him. So fantastic job. Switching gears, we had parent-teacher conferences at TRIS at the end of February and March. Also at TRIS, we had a kindness retreat. I was able to go over for a part of the afternoon. And the staff there for the fifth grade just gushed over what this does for their students and just the culture coming back to the, to the classroom. The students that were kind of resistant in the morning were the ones that were really excited and participating in all the activities by the afternoon. And a great job to our high school students who were over there leading some of those groups. They did a great job. And of course, the fifth graders really look up to them. Lots of things going on with music. The band had a concert at the end of February. The choir had its own concert on March third. Jazz concert last Thursday, and then solo and ensemble this past weekend. So what you would expect out of Evansville. Lots of things going on with, with music. Read Across America Week was last week. I was invited, I think Mr. Schwartz was invited too, to be a, a guest secret reader here at TRIS where we were reading The Big Cheese, which was a pretty cool book to read over the intercom. Also had families, family literacy and math night last Thursday night. I know a few of you were there to see the amount of people that came in. Jess was really happy with the turnout in what's, again, kind of a growing event for us.
Do you have an estimate?
I did not get an estimate. They are kind of spread out through the night, so it was a little bit more difficult. In terms of what's coming up, we do have Spread Goodness Day on Friday. Some of these things have already been happening this week as part of Kindness Week. The administrative team will be over at Evansville Manor to spread some goodness on Friday. Also, spring break. I think it kind of feels like spring break weather now, but that will be at the end of March. I did want to give the board just a preview of school perceptions. So most of you are familiar with school perceptions. They did some surveying for an earlier referendum. What school perceptions is really good at is getting information from both our staff, which is great for our administrative team to hear and get some feedback from. It's anonymous, and so the staff can be honest and forthcoming with how they feel things are going. And then from our parents. And from the parent's standpoint, it really does help our staff set some goals. So the feedback that we get and what they want to see us work on, we can then create goals for next school year out of that. There is a school board election coming up on April first. Time to have it on April Fool's Day, but hopefully that doesn't trick anyone. It really is happening that day. And for those of you that maybe are listening online, there is a school board candidate forum put on by Becoming Better Neighbors tomorrow night at Creekside Place. Finally, six P M. Yes. Finally, a lot of things that are coming up in terms of our recognition of staff. Hopefully, we're doing a good job at all the different groups that we recognize throughout the year. Coming up, our paraprofessionals appreciation day. In Evansville, we call them educational assistants. That'll take place on April second. There's National School Librarian Day. We have Mrs. Crandall, but also four clerks that will be celebrating again that first week of April. And then National Assistant Principals Week in the second week of April. And then on top of all that, we do have the FFA seventy-sixth Annual FFA Banquet at the Red Barn first week of April as well. So a lot going on this spring.
Anybody else have any announcements? Matt, is there any public presentations? All right, moving on to information discussion, high school board reps. Are they, there you go.
They've got actually two that Paige will bring up. One from February and one from March.
So we hope this works. There's a keyboard up there, so you might be able to hit the next button to go to. Well, I'll start with the February presentation, just kind of like a recap of myself. Oh, thank you. And so as we were able to walk right into the school, we were able to see in the display the Kindergarteners, amazing talent, as they were working through organic lion sculptures and charcoal drawings, really just like showing like appreciation for nature and like just the world around them with like a mix of like excitement as they like had fun wrapping up within like the winter season. As well as they had like patterns and contrasts through the inspiration of Charles McGee, which he used black and white. As he saw them as like the greatest combination of opposites, and he claimed that they would speak the strongest language. And then within, just like down the first grade hallway, they had like the cute little displayed snowmen of them just like counting up how many snowballs it took to create their snowmen and just kind of adding them up just to really just keep that engagement and fun with math. And then second grade, we got to see them in their specials. And then the gym students were letting students run around, get out their energy, as well working on their eye-hand coordination. They were really, really excited to show us how they threw up the ball and how they catched it. And then as well, within guidance, students discuss their fears and just emotions and just what they can do to work through them and just what to do when they have all these big emotions. And as well, the book fair was going on during the month of February, and that's just really helps inspire like young readers by providing books that they can own as well as just like really like spark their interests. And then for Theodore Robinson, within third grade, they were learning about history, kind of just through the Renaissance. Really just like having fun, like coloring the pages, just to really have like a visual representation of what the Greek god and goddesses looked like. As well as taking this learning and putting it into early paragraph formation through stating reasons and examples to back up their claims, which really just kept the students engaged through the long, oh, sorry. And as well, as their, as the little snowman things that they drew. That was like a little prediction fun for like a snow day, like what they'd do on a snow day if we had one. Which was pretty funny because like the next like day or so after we. And then fourth grade, we got to stop into a fourth grade classroom where they were celebrating Chinese New Year's. And it was, this year's the year of the snake. And just definitely like sharing a culture through the presentation so they could know the information. Someone brought in handmade food. I don't know exactly the name of it, but they were all really enjoying it. And then there was beautiful decorations all throughout the classroom, and the kids got to learn how to use chopsticks. They were showing us. They were, they were definitely learning, but I was impressed. Throughout the middle school, the sixth graders and the tech ed room were just innovating individualistic cars. Just adding like new things that they tried to like want to experiment to add to the cars. It was pretty cool. And then seventh grade, science Olympics has been brought back, which is really nice. It was really nice to see that because the students would get together in groups and work together kind of just against their peers, but also this competitiveness would just really like spark their interest in science because obviously you want your team to win. And so then it really just kept the students on their toes as they would always need to use their problem-solving skills. And then eighth graders, we got to see their food sculptures, which I was very impressed because I don't remember mine looking like that. I was in eighth grade. So I was like, dang, I was like, they did really good. Like really good sculpting and painting, and it was really good. And as well as just learning and appreciation for Black History Month within their social studies classes. And then as well as just celebrating the Chinese New Year, as well as they had some lanterns hung up. And then, oh, and then within the high school, the anatomy and physiology class did interactive demonstration of the blood flow through the heart. And they had some pretty cool drawings and stuff and just very interactive teaching about the body. And then as well, Xavier Debold was a national merit scholarship finalist, which this recognizes high achieving high school students with, with the scholarship and other awards based on their PSAT score, which that's pretty impressive. And then a lot of club highlights that month. The wrestling team were conference champs, which was super exciting, as well as Danny Heiser had hit his two-hundredth win. And as well, he tied for the state record for two-hundred-and-twelve win. And then the Quiz Bowl team qualified for nationals, which that was really impressive. I was like, wow, good job. And Colton Richards broke the Edgerton Evansville program record and the hundred breath stroke. And then Brooklyn Mays broke the school record for the amount of points scored in a single game. She scored thirty-eight points, beating the previous record of thirty-four.
Okay, and then for March, first we went to Levi Leonard, and Tatum and I had the honor of joining the Kindergarteners for lunch. And they told us about the books they're reading in class, and also they could not stop telling us about how much they love their teachers, which I thought was really sweet. In first grade, they are learning about earth and space and science, and they studied the different plants and stars through their art activity. And then the second graders are working on their history and English skills. This tile project tells a story about the end of industrial revolution with pictures and four sentences about the significance of the pictures in each corner. And then at TRIS, the third graders just completed their music concert, which was all about food. They sang and played various instruments while also memorizing their speaking parts. The fourth graders, we sat down with them and did some math. They were showing us their multiplication skills. Additionally, the fourth and fifth grade math team, twenty-four team, just competed at UW-Madison through Advanced Learning Network in Dane County, and we had a high school proctor to go with them too. And then the fifth graders, they read to us their essays about life in the Renaissance era. They each studied a historical figure and wrote about their lives, practicing their descriptive writing skills, and they read them to us. And then at J C McCann, the sixth graders were learning about inequalities in math. And they also told us that Ms. Schwartz is a queen, and that's why in that picture she's wearing a crown that one of the students made her. In seventh grade English, they are reading a class book about the struggles of being a middle schooler and how to look out for your friends. And then the eighth graders made posters about the books that they're reading, they read last unit. And currently, the English and social, social studies departments are teaching about World War II and the Holocaust, where students will read biographies from people who lived through that time. And then high school, I know you covered a lot of our highlights, but congratulations to our three qualifying state boards. We had bowling, wrestling, and cheer. Obviously, congratulations to our wrestlers, Colin, Colton, and Danny, who were champions in their weight class. And then our cheer team for their co-ed game day routine. And lastly, the bowling team that went to state this past weekend. And pictured, you can see we have a parade for every state team. So we play music on the loudspeakers at the end of the day, and they parade through the whole school, which I think is awesome. And then this last week, the juniors completed their ACT. And then freshmen and sophomore students will take the pre-ACT in April. And we also had our high school band concert, a choir concert, and jazz concerts all in March, which is really fitting because March is music in our school's month. We also just competed at Soul and Ensemble, which we have lots of students going to state for that. And we would like to thank Ms. Ekins, Ms. Propper, Ms. Leahy, and Ms. Sablaski for inspiring us students to love and appreciate music and just celebrate this month. And then lastly, for our club highlights, we are proud of the high school green team for installing energy-efficient LED lights in our school in the hallways, thanks to a grant they received from Evansville Power and Light. And then all the schools are, and clubs are celebrating Goodness Week this week. We are all dressing up to promote Goodness Day in our schools. Goodness Day is this Friday, and it's a global initiative encouraging students to take action and spread goodness in their communities, proving that even small acts of kindness can make a difference. And we saw this being celebrated from kindergarten with their pictures that they colored all the way to the seniors dressing up. So make sure you wear your yellow on this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good job. All right, Mr. Administrator update.
I will start out with some recent donations since our last board meeting. Again, just very fortunate to be in a district where we've got these kinds of donations coming in on a monthly basis. We had thirty dollars as usual come in from the Phones for the TRIS and Levi Leonard music programs. Over four hundred dollars from the Allen and Diana Eager Fund toward improvements at the PAC. Another two hundred and fifty dollars from Jeff and Deb Herbers toward the PAC as, as well. For those of you who don't know Jeff, he's also president of the local Lions Club, which does a lot of their own fundraising too. Big, big thanks to the Fourth of July fundraiser in Evansville. They had taken some of their proceeds and donated two thousand dollars to our Student Services Department here in the district. And then, of course, the PTO in this latest round, a seven, over a seventeen-hundred-dollar donation to a number of different projects ranging anywhere from fifty dollars all the way up to five hundred dollars. And then I mentioned the kindness retreat. Julianne Larson and Christine Benedict had donated five hundred dollars. So that goes toward the youth frontiers fee that they charged to come in and, and run that. So big thanks to them. In addition, the report that you see up, I thought the board would be interested in seeing, you know, as we talk about data and Mr. Schwartz brings some of these to our attention in his report, what our principals are actually measuring with their own staff. And you'll see very consistent themes. So increasing scores in Fastbridge, both reading and math, and C K L A end-of-year assessments as well. And then moving that benchmark, making sure that we're meeting certain benchmarks in Fastbridge. So you can see that's a Levi Leonard, and then a TRIS, and then a middle school goal. And then at the high school, reducing failures, that's obviously important when you get to credits. And students, especially freshman year, realizing that every class that they take is important to pass, so that they have enough to graduate with their peers. So those are just some of the SLOs with all of our principals on a summary year and my evaluation process that we're, that we're monitoring. Again, Tatum and Ally mentioned the ACT. Students actually start to get their own scores back before we get them as a group. And so really, within about another month or so, they'll start getting their scores back from this past Tuesday. Paige, if you keep going, wanted to talk a little bit about the open table meal. This was the first one that I had been involved with. Just a huge thank you to Nancy Greavy. So she first said, hey, Nate, can you start getting some information out on this? There's a little bit of money that the school needs to come up with to be a sponsor for this. But learned a lot from Kathy Wells. For those of you that haven't met Kathy Wells, so Kathy plans the menu. She shops for the groceries. She gets all of us together, like Hope and Dana and I were there that night working. And then you take orders from Kathy, do what she says, and miraculously, you're able to feed, I think, from my estimate, counting all the tables, about a hundred and fifty people that night. So it was a really cool experience, and people very thankful. And even just the variety, I think there were like three different entrees, like three side dishes, some vegan, some vegetarian, to meet everybody's needs. And then you wouldn't see it in this picture, but Jenny and Charity were on the other side with, some of our staff had, had made desserts, and were passing those out as well. So, and then it was really nice that Nancy and Dad Cobb were basically the masters of ceremony, making sure everybody had what they needed. We had some people in walkers or wheelchairs that they would then help through the line as well. So it was a, it, the, from three-thirty to seven went extremely fast, and it was just, I think it was, I'm not sure. Hope and Tina wanted to say anything about that.
No, it's just a great thing that they do in the community. And, and I, and what I understand even, it was busy on Monday, but I understand is that even wasn't like a busy night for this meeting. So, but it was busy. But it's just, it's, if you're ever, you know, want a meal, or if you ever want to volunteer, they're always looking for you.
Yeah, it's really nice. I actually heard someone say, you know, if I didn't have this today, I don't, I don't know what I would be doing. So it kind of, it's just a nice touch to hear that we're helping, even if it's just for a day a month.
If Paige keeps going forward, one of the things I wanted to focus on is the allocation of special education staff. So more so than any district that I have ever been in, this administrative team really does look at things from a district-wide perspective. It's easy as a principal, and I was a principal for a while, to only be concerned with your building and what you want, and what you think you need, and advocating for your staff. But the team that we have here does a really good job at looking at what needs are across the district and realizing it might not be the year for, let's say, Levi to get more staff, or it might not be the year for the high school to get more staff. But they can see that and work very well together. So in this room just a week ago, Janessa had a, one of the large post-it for every grade level. On that grade level was the name of every student with an IEP in the district in addition to initial evaluations that are coming where they could soon have an IEP. All the staff, and then these were all color-coded to see what the sort of intensive needs might be versus students that might not need as much help, and then the staff that goes along with them. And then you could see the principals working through like, okay, there's a, a, a big need in second grade that's going to go to third grade this year. How do we address that so that we get staff into TRIS? Same thing, a fifth grade class that's going to be a more intensive sixth grade class in terms of special education needs next year. How do we move staff from TRIS to the middle school to get what they need there? So it's a, was a, a, a great process that Janessa had set up. Again, just can't commend this, the administrative team for looking at not what is best for them and what's going to be easiest, but what's really best for the kids in those grades where the needs are the highest. So.
Where our needs are the highest, my question is, are we still keeping a lone teacher to student ratio like we talked to the community about?
Yeah, and that, that is always the, the goal there. That's where you're going to see, you know, educational assistants potentially move. We've even talked about, do we need to move case managers from one building to another when the needs move up? That doesn't happen in every school. For example, as a principal, I've given an educational assistant to a lower level, but that same group comes up and they come back to my building, I didn't get those, that support back. You know, well, I gave it, but why isn't following those kids? Here, that's certainly the priority to make sure that, that staff follows where those needs are. Last thing, I, I think I will, actually, two more things that I'll mention. So Tom and I had the bidding process. We thought, we were told that four different companies were going to bid. You have to show up to bid, even though four had indicated that they would be here, only two showed up. So that's Tahoe and Aramark. And so when those bids are opened on the twenty-first, there's a very distinct process that we have to take through with a matrix. And then obviously, we'll announce out of those two Tahoe and Aramark who has won that bid. Again, a lot of that is dictated by the Department of Public Instruction. And then last but not least, Tom and I had a meeting just yesterday with USI. We still haven't narrowed down to exactly what that increase in insurance premiums will be. We budgeted for five percent. We're capped at nine point nine percent, and talking to our representative, Al Yeager, who is a master of this. It could be anywhere from a little less than that, four and a half percent up to the nine point nine, but he continues to negotiate with SSM Dean. And then what will happen is after the school board election, then we have reorganization on April twenty-third. We'll have that personnel committee get together to look at our options, one plan maybe versus another plan and what that would cost. And then bring those to the staff so that they can see those as well, because they have some buy-in to that. And then finally, we'll bring that back in May for a, a, a board renewal at that time. So there's still some work to be done. And again, that's why we employ USI is to negotiate for us with, with our healthcare provider.
Any questions for Mr. Perry? Matt, thank you. Youth in our long presentation.
Hello. So Happy Youth Art Month. So I'm gonna, I think this is maybe my sixth year coming to talk to you about art and advocating for a subject that I'm here. So I'm going to talk to you today about some best practices in elementary. Like any kind of education, there's always fads, waggons that roll through, and there's things that are hard and fast, good teaching. So I'm going to go through some best practices and some examples of how it can be used in the classroom. Can I do this myself? I think you can. Yeah, okay. So first of all, why art matters. You can see art builds critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills in different ways than, say, a math class or an English language art class can do. Because there's multiple solutions to a criteria or a problem that I present to the students. Each student can kind of attack it in their own, in their own way, where like math, two plus two is always going to be four. There's no other answer. So in art, it gives us a good opportunity for kids to like learn that. Supports literacy and cognitive development, encourages creativity and self-expression, and then just enhances engagement in all subjects. So one of the things that are, is kind of fatty, and I talked about it last year, is the idea of choice-based art or teaching for artistic behavior, which is a little bit more age-appropriate for a high school, but a lot of teachers are, are going with this at elementary. And I think they're doing, personally, I think they're doing their students an injustice by not making sure they're getting all the skills they need. Because you can't make qualitative choices unless you understand what your options are and how you can do them. So a lot of students who do just choice-based art gravitate to the things they're best in or the media that they prefer, and it's not stretching them. So what I advocate for is what I call choice with constraint, and this balances the structure with the student autonomy. You can help them guide their choices within a framework. So like, this is your goal. So like, this is your goal, how are you going to get theirs up to you? This is where we're heading. So, a while back, I presented on my apple art lesson, this is a good example of that choice with constraint. So the students are tasked with creating art where the apple is the subject, but they can do it in any way they want. There's adaptive things like apple stencils for students who maybe like, you know, like need a little help with that. So you can see the variety of ways students have solved this problem, right? And the great thing is, a lot of them use past knowledge. So the weaving is something, second grade, this is a second grade project, we learn how to weave in first grade. So they're using that past knowledge. The wood structure, we learn how to make a constructive sculpture in kindergarten. So seeing them go back, the apple strip that's at the little apple museum, that's an apple visiting a museum with other apple art. They learn how to make a paper sphere in first grade. So they're really like using these ideas. Some kids, like the stitching, bring skills they learned from home. So somebody, my grandma taught me how to needlepoint, can I needlepoint? I'm like, yeah, if you know how to do it, go for it. Another example is heart art. So again, you need to compose, you need to make a composition where the heart is the subject matter. Students have a variety of media in which to choose from. The main criteria then is, like, we talk about the viewer, like somebody who's looking at your art, they should be able to recognize, oh, this art is about hearts, or this art is about apples. So using that as the main criteria. So that would be considered the constraint, but then there's a lot of autonomy in how they get there. So everyone is successful. So also, visual literacy, connecting art to literacy and comprehension skills, teaching kids how to read images, which is actually something Harvard's been studying. Pre-med students are now taking classes in how to look at art, because they just got, they can be better, I can't say the word, they can diagnose better if they learn how to look. Like, the average person only looks at a piece of art at a museum for 10 seconds. So that look and go, and then the age of technology, we're flicking, we're scrolling, we're not ever like waiting and looking at something. So teaching the students how to like slow down, look at art, see what they notice, comparing and contrasting, bringing in literature that you can compare and contrast with artwork. So the book Feathers for Lunch by Lois Ellard and the Cat and Bird Story, we relate back to the painting Cat and Bird by Paul Clay. And we talk about point of view, each story is from a different perspective. One is from the owner's perspective of the cat, the other one is from the cat's point of view. And then we use those stories to interpret what we think's happening in Paul Clay's painting. And this we do in kindergarten. So here are my kindergartners, you can see they have all their hands stuck under their armpits. We're learning how to like respect the time to think about an answer for a question instead of shooting our hands up. So I tell them, lock your hands up, and they'll go, chik chik. Lock their hands under their armpits so that they don't raise their hand, because I say, I'm going to ask you a question, I want you to think about it.
I don't do this.
So, they can't raise their hand until I unlock their, and I have the magic remote control that unlocks their arms from there. So here you see students, just this week, we were learning about still-life drawings, the art of observational drawing, where you have to really look at what you're going to make the picture of. So we were comparing and contrasting these two paintings side by side. So I asked the children, what do you notice that's the same, what do you notice that's different? We talk about sentence structure, instead of saying that one or that one, like saying the title, you know, or if they're untitled, the painting on the left, you know, has a bee while the painting on the right has a ladybug. So we're like learning how to like structure that as well. Visual thinking strategies is also important, again, encouraging those observations and the reading of the reasoning and discussion, asking students like, what makes you say that? If they say, like, what do you notice in this piece of art? Before I give any input about it, I'll want them to kind of, I want to paint what they're thinking about. And then if they make an analysis, I'll say, what makes you say that? Like, back it up, like, why do you think that? Open-ended questions. So some of the skills, three years ago, I went to Washington DC to the National Art Gallery, and I took a class on critical thinking. And these are some of the skills we brought back. So slow looking, that's where we were locking our arms, what makes you say that? See, think, wonder, like what do you see, what do you think, what do you wonder about the artwork? Sometimes the kids write a rate, when I'm showing them an artist, they're like, is he dead? They want to know if this person's living or not. And then like, sometimes they are, sometimes they're not, sometimes they were and then they're not. You know, I had that happen with an artist last year, like they died, like right before the lesson. I'm like, well, last week they were alive. You know, like, because they want to know, like, could we ask them about their art? Because we sometimes talk about, you know, what's happening? And I'm like, well, I'm just forming an opinion. And sometimes when we talk about art, I have these little palettes, one side says fact, one side says opinion. So again, we learn about like the fact of the painting, like the previous one. This is a painting of flowers, fact. I really like this painting of flowers, that's an opinion. So we kind of learn to justify our conversations that way, too. Oh, I kind of talked about this already. So the Project Zero is, again, learning how to like studio habits of mind and observing, encouraging persistence, letting kids know it's okay to make mistakes, encouraging mistakes as a way, a path to learning. And then like, how do you deal with it? Okay, that didn't go the way you wanted, what are we going to do about it? And I always joke, and I'm like, I promise your head won't explode, like if you make a mistake. And sometimes like with the still-life drawings we're doing now, I tell the kids, like, you're going to, it's almost a direction. You know, you're going to draw that, you're going to look, you're going to follow the color, you're going to make a mistake, it's a direction. So it's like, if they make it a mistake in their still-life, they're like, ah, I made a mistake! I'm like, yay! Because then they're learning from that, just kind of like dispel that idea. Students then in Learning in the Arts is a PLC group I'm part of, teachers from different parts of Wisconsin, and one in Minnesota. We get together four times a year, like little retreats, we go away for four days in the summer. And then we, this is the group I do a lot of my presentations with. And we're using a lot of the information from Project Zero and the critical thinking components to kind of plan out, like, almost like little mini-studies of what we want to do in our classroom, and then bring back our information. And then more recently, I joined a group of elementary art teachers in Madison, and we take turns every other month visiting each other's classrooms and kind of just, you know, making our own professional development. Because usually, there's only one of us in a building, so it's nice to like go with other people who do what you do.
Cool.
So here you see some of the kiddos proud about their work, just trying to like diversify what they're learning about. And through these different best practices, the students are really happy with, you know, their outcomes, studying art, practicing in their sketchbooks. And then of course, their connection with other subjects. I've been recently taking my lesson plans and copying them and putting them into an AI program, and having the AI program search out what other subject standards my lesson meets. So like beside, I know the art ones, but then instead of doing all the legwork, so I'll put it in and it'll say, it hits this math standard, or this language art standard, or this social studies standard. So that's, you can, art really just does meld all of those subjects together really nicely. And you can see, so like the structure building, we learn about forms, which is a math concept. Although I get like nails on the chalkboard when I hear the math books call them 3D shapes, because just by the nature of the definition of a shape, it's two-dimensional, forms are three-dimensional, so like, there's no such thing as a two-dimensional shape, or a three-dimensional shape, I mean, they're forms. So sometimes I tell the kids, like, the people who wrote your math book maybe didn't pay attention in art very well. Learning about different cultures, in that painting there, we had studied mud cloth from West Africa, and the, we were studying the repetition of the patterns in the mud cloth, and so then they're just creating their own kind of versions. The mushroom study was a project last year where the students like looked at the different diversity of mushrooms, and then they created a sculpture and putting in. Oh, now you can see the fact, opinion. Jam a day that day. And then just the role of reflection in art education. In second grade, the students start writing artist statements for their bigger projects. You know, what did you, what are you trying to say, how did you make the art, how did you feel about it? Sometimes I ask, if you were to do this again, what would you change about your art? You know, like that reflecting. And then, we're getting to the point now where they're going to start assessing their own artwork against the criteria of the project, which are listed on the board. So it just helps, it gives them a good mindset about developing their own art. So here's an example of beginning of the year self-portrait and the end of the year self-portrait. So in second grade also, we do, we have, the kids make a portrait book, and then we just study realism. Second grade's art curriculum is based about different art styles, and letting kids under, like, some kids will think they're not good at art because they can't draw things that look real. So we're really diversifying, like looking at artists that make art in all different ways, but we do study realism in our portraits. So they start to learn about proportion, so you can really see the growth. And then the last page in their portrait book is an artist statement where they talk about their growth, like how well they, you know, went from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And they're always so proud of themselves by the end of the year, like the change, just from little, little lessons we do, you know, we'll learn about eyes, and then maybe the next month, nose and lips, and then we'll just kind of a little bit at a time, pick away at it, and then, it's great. And then art is just inclusive on its own, it's like self-diversifying, because each student can take the criteria, the lesson directions, to whatever level of skill that they have personally. And that just really helps build their self-esteem. It also is a great way to introduce culture. I know the classroom teachers are so busy with math and language arts, that sometimes like social studies or cultural aspects of the teaching kind of have to take a backseat. So bringing that in mostly into the first grade curriculum, the students learn about art around the world. We'll take a principle of design, like pattern, and then we'll see how artists around the world use pattern in their art. Now we're doing radial symmetry. So first graders are making prints where they rotate the tile that they develop to create a radial pattern, and we were looking at tiles from Persia and the Middle East. So, that's it for me tonight. Are there any questions? I love questions. Actually, yes. Speaking of that, I, a little lightbulb moment, you know, when you're awake at 3:00 AM, I want to start having maybe a guest art student, where school board members, principals can come in and like be, just take the class, like sit in with the class and make art alongside the kids, just casually. So I'm going to try to figure out how to make that work. So art student, guest art student, whenever people want to pop to me. Okay.
You're grading me.
Self-assessment. Thank you all for leading.
Thank you.
Really good stuff, thank you. All right, summer school preview. As Mark's coming up, just, there was some feedback on last year's program, and Mark has certainly taken that to heart, and you're going to see some changes that are in the works for this year, especially, you know, more options for middle school students, as they have a lot more, you know, in grades K-5 and then what's available, you know, in the middle school year. So Mark will address that.
Sure. Summer school, I did give you a little more detailed report in your board docs, but I just thought tonight I'd follow these slides and kind of walk you through the months of summer. You know, it's March right now, we're in the planning stages, getting our staff together. As we get into April, we'll start assigning courses and creating schedules, and from there, we start to communicate with families in May and start the registration process and dive in in June. One of the things we did recently with, to help Paige, save the date, especially for our youngest students, for families in K through five. So we'll continue with communication along the way. The reality is, none of this happens if we don't have teachers that are interested in being a part of it. And so, we have a lot of great staff, a lot of great skills that come in in the summer, and spend a good chunk of their vacation providing enrichment to students, in some cases, some additional support that follows up on what students were doing in the spring. And we're just lucky to have that, because it wouldn't happen otherwise. So what I'll probably do here is just kind of walk you through each month. The K-2 targeted literacy instruction, I've been at the podium a few times lately, talking about what we're doing with our students based on AIMS Web data and personal reading plans. This spring, when we gather some more data, we'll identify some students and families we want to reach out to and offer some additional support in the summer. And in some cases, we might already kind of have that on our radar, but we'll update data to drive that. We've got three teachers who have, we've tried it differently over the last few years. We're going to try a new approach this year where we might have some teachers going into daycares, if it works. And in some cases, daycares that are on-site here make it a little easier to do, but reach out to those students, and we know exactly what skills we're working on based on the data we collect. And so, you'll see that come up a couple times throughout the three months that I speak to. Our pop-up program, that's about, you know, that's available to all students in middle school and high school. We do separate them, it's kind of nice with the new middle school, there's a weight room, and there's a gym, and there's an outdoor space. The high school has, again, the weight room, a track, an outdoor space, you'll even find kids doing stretches and some sort of yoga-type work out in the commons area. So you'll see that one appear a few times throughout the summer as well, as I get into July. But that's a nice program, because students can really identify goals and tailor their action steps throughout the summer to align to that. In the upper right corner is the JCM Summer School. And I should say, when we speak to K-5 students, 6-8 students, we're talking about this school year's K-5, this school year's 6 through 8. We're looking at a couple weeks in June for the middle school, summer school program. Mr. Voskell had a great idea about some environmental science, where we can get outside and get to the park. We're talking about Spanish options, and I know that was not only a great option, but after, you know, some loss in programming this year, that's a nice bring-back for the students. Some technology-based kind of project management, I think even in your, in the other document I wrote, I used the word coding, but I don't even, I don't even think that's the word we'll use for summer school, but that's still shaking out. And some English language arts enrichment and, you know, some creative writing type things going on. We also will use some spring assessment data to identify some students that might benefit from some extra support in math. And throughout this whole summer school program at JC McKenna, we're going, we're playing with the idea of having students and families identify the classes they want to take, not a number of classes within a certain amount of time, possibly, if a student wants to take that environmental studies and that's it, they have a busy schedule, they can come in for that class. If a student wants to take two or three, that's an option. And when I brought up that math idea, that might just not necessarily fit right into that same timeframe, but it would be available to students when it works for them. So that's nice, because it creates more options. The agriculture ed, that kind of, that goes on throughout the summer, and our two ag teachers at the high school are real busy with supporting kids, presenting at fairs, making food safety courses, and it's very much leadership-based, and getting kids to, you know, spread their wings and work together, but they still have that support they have throughout the year. So that's getting started in June. Papa at both the high school and the middle school will continue throughout July. The K-5 enrichment program is the one that, you know, you've heard me speak of in previous years, and we've got a lot of course offerings. The goal is always get to 20 teachers. A year ago when I did this, I was struggling to get to 20, and we got there. This year, we're there pretty quickly. So that kind of gets the, helps us to get the ball rolling and assigning classes. Again, teachers come in and they come in with a lot of expertise in their content area, and that's great. And then in other cases, our teachers step out of their comfort zone and try something fun and new that they're excited about, a chance to reboot the kids really like that, too. So I think I had a link in there of some of the programming from last summer. At this point, and even since I submitted that a week ago, at this point, most of those courses have been planned. And there's a few more ideas, world cultures, and a few more ideas that we're bringing into the mix. EHS credit recovery, that happens at the high school, and you know, the learning targets that drive our instruction, that's nice, because it's an opportunity for students to get some extra support, specific to the learning targets that apply to the need, you know, as opposed to taking an entire course over. We really dive into those specific skills. So that happens throughout July. Kelly Fanta has run that in the past, and she's created some creative options for students, you know, if they're expected to be there for 12 days, she gives them a 15-day window, because of course, summers get previous for high school kids, too. And then when we get into August, we've only got a couple weeks before we start getting the staff back, but that targeted literacy instruction, that would continue as well. And it might be some students that it didn't work for in June, based on schedules. One thing I didn't mention is, we also, we have three sections in each of our, each of our K-5 enrichment program. So we would have three sections of that option as well. So depending on schedules. So depending on schedules, students can have those services in June, July and/or August. And the agricultural class continues throughout August. Goes right back to the 25, 26 school year. That's where we are at this point. I will touch as we go, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can people remind me again, can parents like sign them up, you know, a couple of days, but not the full program? Or do they have to be in the full program?
We encourage them to sign up and come when they can.
All right, any other questions?
I hope that the teachers take time when they're not doing this to like actually take a break.
Yes.
Like literally June through August and that's summer, so thank you, teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, activities and athletic director spring report.
This is Kendall's third time here this year, so we'll wrap up the winter, preview the spring. I even learned quite a bit when he submits these. Like I didn't realize the quiz bowl team at the middle school had doubled in size this year, which is fantastic. Didn't realize that Kennedy Sendelbach was named all-state cheer team. So those are things that I learned. One thing to note, when you see the participation numbers, Kendall wanted me to remind you that those were when he submitted this. So kids that were eligible to participate because they had all their paperwork in by, by March 4th. So those numbers are probably higher.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Perry and Ally and Tatum are kind of stealing my thunder. Winter was sure busy, but it was, it was fun and exciting. Couple of things that I want to touch on in terms of our performing arts. Everyone's gearing up for the musical, the 60th year anniversary of Matilda, April 11th through 13th, and all the festivities that happened over that weekend. So mark your calendars. The anticipation is mounting. It's a week earlier than in past years. PAC upgrades, I think since the last time I have, I've spoke about the, at the winter school board meeting, we've now finished phase two or what we deemed as phase two. So the, the new sound and the new light board is installed. We have two new spotlights that are installed and then the monitors that have come, come with the, with the new boards. A special thank you to EHS alum Matt Albrecht. And then Griffin and Lyman for setting those things up and keeping us on track with that. They have been invaluable to the process. We are still taking donations and donations are still coming in as Mr. Perry alluded to earlier. And then the next phase, we're going to start changing the stage lights over to LEDs. So that, that it's a continuous process and so we're very excited for that and the progress that we've made so far.
What are you on your, your goal? Like if we had like a thermometer, then just where are you going to be? Like, I mean, I've seen so many great donations come through, it seems like you would be close.
Well, everything costs money.
How much do you need?
Oh, well.
We're never close enough.
Not that I'm going to write a check, but I just think it would be helpful.
We can, we can use all the help that we can get.
Well, just as an example, like the stage curtains, for example.
Yeah, the stage curtains are, if we want to replace the stage curtain, those are between $50,000 and $60,000. So, I mean, that's just gives you, yeah. When we, when we priced out the, the entire quote, like our entire wish list at the beginning, it was close to $200,000. So it, I mean.
There's got to be a grant for those curtains.
And, and the Evansville, the Evansville education grant that we received this, this, earlier this year. And then that incredible donation that, I mean, that, I mean, made all of this possible essentially. So, so yeah, donations are still coming in. The LED lights are a little bit more inexpensive. Those are around, you know, probably $200 apiece. So those we can, we can move pretty, a little bit quicker. But yeah, there's, there's, we're, I don't know where we'd be on a thermometer, but, but we, we're making progress. Let's just put it that way. Mr. Perry alluded to our quiz bowl team at the middle school doubling in size, which is awesome. You all heard about our great athletic teams over, over the winter. Basketball, both girls and boys hosted a first round playoff game here. So that's a testament to their, their positive seasons that they've had. Just this past week, at the all-conference meeting, Danny Heiser received another award. He was voted the Rockville Conference Male Wrestler of the, of the Year. So the accolades for him just, just keep on, keep on coming. Few weeks ago, he was named the WIS Sports Player of the Year, or Player of the Week, excuse me. We are, our facilities and, and the way we host things open the doors for people to come in the building. We just got done hosting the girls' basketball Division III sectional final game between Edgerton and Laconia, which is the game right before state. So we had quite a few people come to that. I received a call from the WIA on Monday wanting us to host tomorrow night's Division V boys sectional semifinal game. So our, so people are coming into our facilities, which is a great thing because people are coming into our communities. I talked to, or I heard from Greg Ardest in downtown that your parents were there at 9:00 AM sharp, having breakfast on that Saturday. So it's, it's, it's great when we're hosting these things, people are coming into our schools, people are patronizing our, our communities. So it's, it's awesome. So we're very excited to show off our facility. So that's another positive from this past week.
I'll interrupt Kendall too because he's being pretty modest. You don't get those invitations from WIA unless you have a manager, him at these games that, that do that. Another thing that my wife just told me, she said, hey, Evansville just got a shout-out. So the game that was here on Saturday, WCLO was here to cover. And they went on for quite a long time, just about the facility and the setup. And that is a lot, Kendall, and the organization that he brings with.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, Saturday's game, we had two separate live streams going and then two radio stations that came in and broadcast from the different. Well, it, it was nice because WJVL and WCLO for Edgerton, obviously, and then Laconia had their stations from, from north a little bit, come down. And it, it was exciting to see the Laconia parents and the Laconia's staff's faces when they walked in because they, they'd never been here before. So it was, it was very nice. Upcoming events, as you can see, we're still, we have a lot of concerts to go in May. Prom is, is May 10th. I know that's, everyone's super pumped for that. And then we have senior graduation presentation night, the last one of the year on April 23rd. Moving into springs, spring athletics, track just started on Monday. Otherwise, our spring sports still, still have yet to get underway. That's why you all are seeing the 24, 25 participation numbers a little bit lower than in years past. We just had the, the spring athletics kickoff this past Wednesday. And so we're receiving registrations. So those, those numbers, when it's all said and done, will be a little bit higher. Are there any questions?
That's singers concert.
The Tris Singers?
Yeah, what is that?
Yeah. So it is a, an extracurricular run by Mrs. Zableski. For intermediate school singers.
All right, any other questions?
I got one. Could the numbers be down because the video game industry is charging forward?
John, we could go on about numbers being down in the spring for quite a while. I have a, I have a lot of opinion about that. I, I think numbers are down and, and honestly, I just attended our AD's meeting today. We're seeing it across the board. Reason being is the winter season is way too long. It extends for quite a few months and kids are in the break sometimes. And so I think numbers are down for a lot of different reasons, not, you can't just pinpoint one certain reason.
Any other questions? Not, we can move on to our Dane County School Consortium. Thank you, Kendall.
So we are going to make some lemonade out of lemons with some news that we got last week about the Dane County School Consortium. For those that aren't real familiar with this, the school district has been a part of the consortium for, since at least 2019. I included the intergovernmental agreement and the bylaws in the, in the packet. And from my perspective, there's really three big important things that the consortium, at least at one point, did. One is that even as young as eighth grade, there's a huge event called Future Quest that brings almost every middle school student in the area to the Alliant Energy Center where they learn about trades. And so you, you can come in and you can see what it takes to be an electrician, what it takes to be a plumber. They learn all about these things. And it's not just the young men, but the young women as well that are exposed to some of these things. And they talk about the benefits to it. So that was one. Another was for some districts that don't have as many course offerings, especially in CTE or the trades. The Dane County School Consortium would offer those to students in high schools across this area. So for example, the, I, I put in there that Ned Lees from Oregon High School, who's an auto teacher there. If you didn't have an auto program, you could send your kids to a nighttime class and he would teach that class. You'd have to get there, but it would at least be available to you. And then the last thing is that they were running across the area, the youth apprenticeship program. So those are obviously big, important things to us. To give you a little bit of what's happened, there are 17 school districts that are members of the Dane County School Consortium. Evansville's one of only two that aren't located in Dane County, the other one being New Glarus and Green County. So for a number of years, the Manona Grove School District has been the fiscal agent for this. So you're talking about a lot of work there with 17 school districts and money coming in and out for those programs. It's been in the news about what has happened recently in Manona Grove. And I don't have the full story as to why they are pulling out as the fiscal agent, but this was in the works for some time. So there was, in the transition from one district administrator to another, the news that broke was that, apparently unbeknownst to some of the people in Manona Grove, the fund balance had been spent down to about 4%. And apparently the board was not aware of that. And so that news broke to the community and it was a pretty big news story this, late this summer in August, that hit for about a week or so, you heard a lot about Manona Grove. So at the end of December, we were informed that officially, Manona Grove was not going to be the fiscal agent for the Dane County School Consortium. We assumed that another district would pick that up. And so we did not hear any updates until we were informed of a meeting that was supposed to take place on February 10th. Well, the February 10th meeting was canceled. Again, no information about that. And then it wasn't until early last week that I was informed of another meeting last Friday on the 7th that would be held about the future of the Dane County School Consortium. At that meeting, we obviously confirmed that Manona Grove was no longer going to be the fiscal agent, but no other district had come forward. There are some districts that I think would be willing to do it, but didn't make a lot of sense. For example, I talked to Aaron Tarnitzer, he's the superintendent. McFarland only has maybe 600 students more than we do. And then to be the fiscal agent of a school district that size for 17 others, we have Madison Metropolitan and Sun Prairie, Wanakee, DeForest, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So what is happening right at this moment, and you, I even got an email yesterday from board meetings that happened Monday night. You'll hear more tonight. And then again, next Monday, when there are other board meetings around the area of districts withdrawing. And the, the, I guess I would call it the fear of remaining in the consortium that's about to fold is if you are left in the consortium, then you may be responsible for what remains of it. And that's our concern as well. So I, I'm here to tell the board and anybody that's listening that we, as soon as we were finding this out, we've made plans already. So there will be no loss in programming here in Evansville. The youth apprenticeship program, which I'll talk a little bit about, will still go forward. We just have to find other ways to monitor the fiscal spending that takes place there. Some of it could actually be a better outcome than what we have going on right now. So the, the reason that there was a little bit of alarm was at least that there's a small window of time now because we didn't have the meeting that was supposed to happen in February and they pushed it all the way to March, that you have to give 90 days notice on the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th. That's April 1st to withdraw from the consortium. And so we don't have another meeting, so that would have to be an action item tonight, which I am recommending and Mark is, is recommending. Where there's some potential, a lot of positivity, is that Mark and I have met with Linda Gard, who runs our youth apprenticeship program, to have a standalone program, 25 students. We have in a high school of about 500, over 500 students. We already have for next year, a conservative estimate of 34 youth apprentices for next year, which is fantastic. Because we've talked about, you know, some of the academic measures that we have and, you know, we're on the AP honor roll. You've got a national merit semifinalist. Sometimes what you don't hear about is the number of kids that we have involved in these programs that are probably not going to need to go to college and can get a great job because for their junior and senior year, they're involved in these kinds of programs. So the, the positive outlook of this is that in our current consortium, we get about $1,100 for every student that's in the consortium that's a youth apprentice and that completes. So they have to do about 800 hours of work over the course of two years. But we only get, from our current consortium, only about $450 of that. They take the rest of that for administrative fees. So one of the things that Mark and I talked about with Linda Gard today is if we are our own fiscal agent, so we don't have to worry about 16 other schools, just about the 34 kids that are in with us. We submit our own grant, which we do get help through the Department of Workforce Development. They will help us with that. Then that $1,100 all comes back to this, that money isn't going anywhere else. And you wonder, what, what does that pay for? For example, there are things like with our employers, travel that Linda has to, and I'll talk a little bit about that. But, you know, we, we usually would put on something like an employer breakfast, thank them for taking on our, our students. Usually there's some kind of a small gift. But you also have things like, you know, meeting times, all that sort of. You also have, and I won't get into great detail, but we've got a CNA program. There's a class that we pay for out of, out of that. So where it, you know, last Friday, there was some, some concern that we're going to have to, you know, go out on our own or find another fiscal agent. In the last really five days or so, we are really looking at this as a, as an opportunity. An opportunity that we now control maybe a little bit more of our own future because that money all comes back to Evansville. What we talked about today with Linda is she feels confident with her background and her connections within the last couple of years of creating this program and developing this program, that she'll be able to submit that youth apprenticeship grant by April 1st. And then we can just take a breather. And the breather is, do we want to join another consortium? And there are others out there. There's an Edgerton Milton Consortium. I've contacted CISA II. Won't take any credit for this. I don't know if I was the first one to contact CISA II, but CISA II has since said, hey, thanks for reaching out. We have other districts that have now been made aware of this and we may be interested in being the fiscal agent. There's a, a Rock Green, um, group also out there. And then Josh Fassel, who is the current director of the Dane County School Consortium, um, may be leading another, um, uh, different consortium into the future. So as soon as, um, Linda submits that grant by April first, then we can take some time to really analyze all of our choices. So I, I, I feel good Linda's fine now, um, wasn't maybe initially, but it's fine now with our withdrawal. We know that this is going to go away, um, but there could be other, again, great benefits for us out of it. One thing I do want to preview is this, Linda is halftime. Just to put this into perspective, uh, there's a hundred and eighty days in the school, the, school year. She needs, with those thirty-four youth apprentices, apprentices, she makes three visits a year to each job site for each apprentice. You start doing the math, that's over a hundred sites as a part-time person in a hundred and eighty-day school year. So, uh, the fact that, um, she's part-time and that the consortium's going away, depending on what that budget looks like, and right now, Tom, you're going to hear in a couple of minutes, our budget is still looking very good. Just because we, um, didn't hire those positions back, we couldn't hire a lot of those positions back maybe a year after the referendum passed. You may be hearing, um, Mark and I coming to you for additional support for that program. And again, I can't speak highly enough about what this does for kids that are not college-bound and the opportunities that it provides them. Um, there would be, it could be a potential, um, one-year lift for an additional person. But then because we're controlling our own grant, you can actually then write, um, part of that into the grant itself, which we then get, um, funded through, at least partially, through the Wisconsin, um, Workforce Development Grant. If we had that other person, um, Linda is already retired. Uh, we don't want to see Linda leave and us not have a transition plan with that. Kind of like what we're experiencing with tech ed this year at the high school. We want a better transition plan between when Linda's ready to phase out and somebody that knows all the employers. Cause there's over, I think she's got, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, something like ninety employers that she works with on a regular basis, trying to find positions for, for these students. So where the outlook was a little bit of doom and gloom last Friday, we really feeling like we're in a pretty good place now. Uh, Linda feels pretty good about where, uh, she's at and her learning and that we're going to control more of our own destiny, but you may hear us come back, uh, potentially with, um, and ask for a staff member that not only would do this, but maybe able to help with ACP, grade six through twelve, which is a state requirement and, um, uh, some other pieces of that in terms of school to career. We just don't want what she has helped build up to now thirty-four students, um, fade if we don't have a good transition plan for her in place.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So when being in that, cause I had brought it up to you before, that twenty-five number is what I was concerned about.
Right.
So I'm glad that we're doing great right now. So if we were in one though, do we share that number, twenty-five, with other schools?
You do.
So.
Yeah.
We, with leaving, obviously we're back to the twenty-five by ourselves. It's great we're doing this year. Are we feeling pretty good that this is going to be happening every year that we can count on that? And if, if we're looking, let's say we forecast numbers and we're like, oh, this year doesn't look like we may hit our number. What does it look like to join a consortium? Like when do you have to do it by and like that?
Yeah. So for example, uh, great question. First of all, the thirty-four that we even have, uh, Linda called that a conservative estimate. She actually sees, so, uh, we've been talking a lot about how many of our students from EHS go on to post-secondary. And, um, you're probably looking, depending on the year, maybe two-thirds. That still leaves a third of our students that are either looking to go into military or right into the workforce afterwards. And we're only touching thirty-four of those between junior and senior year. So the opportunity for growth is definitely there. Um, Linda didn't seem worried at all that we'd continuously be able to hit that twenty-five number, especially if there's more promotion and she has time, um, if she had some help to build it up even further. In terms of the timing of this, so for example, uh, because this was a really quick turnaround, within three days, um, from Friday afternoon now till this morning, having reached out to CISA Two, um, that would be, again, a fairly quick process. The Edgerton Milton one, um, it does help that I have some connections with those school districts, but Edgerton Milton would be willing to take us on tomorrow if we asked them to. So it would, the transition there is not huge. The reason that.
What about like future though? Like I'm saying, we do our own and then we can't hit that number. What is it like to join at that point?
Then, then it still wouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Um, what's bogging us down with the Dane County School Consortium is you can imagine, you've got some very large districts here, right? Sun Prairie, Madison, um, Middleton, just to name a, a few there. And because of the growth of seventeen districts, then of course you get some legal involved, which then is the intergovernmental agreement and the bylaws that are very strict. In terms of like just the Edgerton Milton one, that would be, uh, something that we could just agree to join and, and, and that would not be more than a weeks-long process to do it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? All right.
Uh, one other, sorry Mitch, one other quick thing is, um, there's two motions tonight. One is to withdraw. The other, um, is to give, uh, the district administrator, me, the authority to vote on dissolution of the Dane County School Consortium. Because what's going to happen is when there's nobody left, they wanna vote to make this go away. And instead of me having to come back to the board where we're already out of the program, it would just allow me to vote on that for the district. So that you'll see those two motions.
Anyone else? Recognition. Recognitions of retirements.
Yeah. Um, want to thank, um, uh, Mr. Crandall because he helped put, uh, put some of this together. Have two fantastic, uh, long-time, full-career teachers in Evansville that are going to retire this year. Now, John and I talked about that. It's always sad to lose teachers of this quality. But you also feel happy for them because they're still pretty young men that are, are looking forward to spending some time where they still feel good, you know, and, and be able to enjoy retirement. So, um, right, almost at the same time, we had, uh, received written, um, notification from Brian Benson. He spent his whole career in Evansville, um, thirty-one years, uh, as a science teacher. Uh, he's taught everything from physics to physical science to AP environmental science, to, um, honors physics and AP physics. He has also coached the Science Olympiad team. He's been the science department team leader. He's served on the K-12 Science Curriculum Committee and also been a new teacher mentor. So just a, a, a wide range of contributions. I, I do want to say that, again, I think, um, uh, this past year, settling the teacher contract, uh, passing a referendum, that, um, the culture here, I think, is really pretty positive in terms of morale. And so both of these are going out on a real positive note, uh, not disgruntled. You'll see what Brian says here. He says, "Thank you to the Evansville School District for thirty-one amazing years. The friendships and experiences that I have will forever be a part of who I am. The district and community took a chance on me back in nineteen ninety-four. I hope I have given back a fraction of what I've received from the students, staff and community." So, um, congratulations to Mr. Benson. We're actually going to use, um, the afternoon of the May twenty-third Professional Learning Day, not only to honor our retirees, but also, um, those that have reached the ten-twenty and, uh, gonna miss a year in there, but those marks as well. And then, um, an even longer entire career in Evansville is, uh, Mr. Layman. Mr. Layman started in nineteen ninety-three. If you can imagine this, it was a little bit different back in those days. He started out as a part-time algebra and then kindergarten PE teacher. Imagine that as your, as your day. You can't get maybe further ends of the spectrum. Yeah. Two years later, he was hired full-time at the high school as a PE teacher. He's lived in Evansville since nineteen ninety-five. All of those thirty-two years, he spent half of those years coaching football, almost all of them until just recently, as you know, coaching wrestling, another seven years as a softball coach. I unfortunately did not get to enjoy the twisted comb, but that was something that he and his wife had owned together at one time. And he talks about being able to see all of his former students when they would come in for ice cream. His quote is, "I would say that being here for thirty-two years, there isn't hardly a class that I teach that don't have students of former students." I remember veteran teachers talking about this phenomenon and now I've been experiencing it for many years. It's really kind of neat. Um, his wife is also retiring this year, so, um, John had warned them, uh, get used to being around each other a lot now. Well, congratulations to, to Mr. Layman a, as well. Fortunately, in our weekend postings, we had the science posted because we were already looking for one science teacher. And, uh, that was a little worrisome for us because we looked for a long time for a high school science teacher. And our pool, at least early on in the first couple of weeks, is looking stronger than it's been in the past. So we're hopeful for that. Um, I'm not recommending that, um, future educators go into PE. We do need PE teachers, but there's a lot more PE teachers in the pools than are sometimes necessary. But we'll find a, a great replacement for Mr. Layman as well.
All right. Special thanks to Mr. Benson and Layman for their service. Moving on, board policy, bylaws and administrative.
Yeah. So we, um, met last Wednesday. There were twenty-nine, um, policies between those two, uh, sections that had updates since the board first approved those in two thousand twenty-two. Um, we specifically dove into seven of them at our meeting and talked about them. I was giving Hope a hard time because one of them is about, um, a, a ban on board members using any side, kind of outside electronics, which we thought, this is a great board and they would respect that. So I'm sorry.
Be the odd one.
I had to tease you.
How to do it.
Most of what we looked at last week were one of three things. So technical corrections, uh, the best example I can give you is if there was, um, some kind of change in a state statute or law that then would change our policy, it's a technical correction, usually something simple as that. Others were complete rescinded policies. So usually it's one policy that is completely wiped out and replaced by something new. And then there were some revisions and the board and I went through the choices that we had as a, a district and looked through those. So we're, we're really feeling pretty good. This is, um, we have a second reading, um, in April, on April ninth. And, um, if that's approved that night, uh, we've already done the updates to the two thousands. So today I sent out an email with the policy committee copied on it to, uh, Dr. Anzager to say, can you load the updates to the three thousand and four thousands, which are for our teaching staff and then our support staff? So we can begin that. This even feels, I don't know if Elliot and Hope and Crystal would agree, this even feels a little bit different because, um, because they're updates. It's not like you're going through eighty policies at a time. There are fewer of them, which feels better. At some point, we'll have them all rolled over by, hopefully by the fall. And then we're only doing this probably two or three times a year. So it'll be, it'll be great.
Thank you. Moving on, budget finance, February financial.
All right. Um, the, uh, the notes are in there. At this time of year, now finances start to kind of come together a little bit more. Um, again, I try to remind at each meeting, school finance is very backend funded, but now property taxes are coming in, more aid is coming in, uh, more of our grants that are reimbursable, we can be submitting for those. Um, so now we're starting to see more, more numbers and data, especially on the revenue side. So just kind of touching on the notes there, um, February tax payments were received. Keeping in mind they're, they're kind of a month behind, so the cities and municipalities receive them in December and mostly January. And then they turn around and send them to us in February. So that revenue was received. Uh, looking at the revenue, our, um, year-over-year is favorable on the revenue side. Also keeping in mind, now that those tax payments are coming in, we are seeing the impact of the increased referendum, where anything really up to this point was kind of standard grants and just small, um, facility use fees and things of that sort. So now we're seeing the impact of the referendum, um, start to come in and those dollars being received. Um, on the year-over-year expenses, those are very close and actually slightly favorable. Kind of a quick forecast forward, we will see March with a larger number, um, due to the certified staff negotiations being settled. So that will have the retro pay and then, um, start their new pay as well going forward. But that retro pay will help catch us up. Now also keeping in mind, we're always looking at year-to-date, so we won't see as much kind of noise of a single larger March. Um, but that year-to-date will now really catch itself up. So continue to, to give us more of a, a flat or a predictable, uh, number going forward. Um, also in March, um, we'll see a little bit of an uptick in spending of supplies. Messaging has gone out to staff for, um, reviewing their budgets with their, uh, building principals and making sure that any last-minute supplies that need to be purchased and used for this school year, are still taken into account, as well as starting those conversations with your principal. If you have something unique or out of the ordinary coming up next year, um, that way we can be looking ahead for, for budget planning. Also with this, um, spending in March, that'll give us a nice picture in April and May, uh, for future forecasting of year-end. Um, but on a very high level, again, reminding everyone, with the three-year referendum, we were planning on favorability in year one due to a deficit in year three and kind of that balancing of the two. And then also with vacancies, we'll have a surplus on top of the anticipated surplus. So there will be a larger surplus this year. Um, and that's where we'll then have the discussions of the Fund Forty-Six transfer, um, coming up as well. And then really just kind of in conclusion needed mention, we had our initial discuss, discussion on insurance. So we'll wait for those final rates to come back, um, as well as then bring those to the committee of looking at, are we staying with the exact same policy? Or are we looking at any kind of a, a coverage change, an HSA change of what the total financial impact would be, um, to the district?
Question. The, and I know I asked this last time, but I haven't seen a difference, so I'm asking again. So the insurance and judgments were over what we said we were gonna be.
On, on the revenue side, that's an insurance claim. And so.
Okay.
Are you on the expense one?
Yeah, sorry.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I was on that side. Just trying to understand.
Oh, uh, on the expense side would be because we pay annually. And so we've already paid that. And so the percentage of the year-to-date budget looks artificially high, uh, but we don't pay monthly. We just pay once annually.
So we paid one ninety-one, but we budgeted for one seventy-six.
The other way around.
Other way around.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So that will come up, it, it'll, I meant to say come up some point during this year, that probably hit that one ninety-one?
Uh, no, unless we have any kind of unique adjustments to coverage, like adding vehicles, any changes to coverage, that one seventy-six would stay constant. That's already been spent.
Okay.
So, yep.
So we might have.
So, yeah, we could actually be favorable in that area if we have no changes.
And that's what I was trying to make sure. Cause we already did that, we'll actually have a cushion potential.
Right. Yep, exactly. And then, um, salaries falls in a lot of these, but that's why we're seeing our percent year-to-date being less than if we did our math of our number of months. But that's because the contract was being paid at last year's rate and then in March, we'll see they catch up.
Catch up, okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Good question.
All right. Is there any other questions on the budget? Not, thank you. And, uh, moving on to business action items. I'll entertain a motion to approve the two new Evansville scholarships.
I make a motion to approve two new scholarships at Evansville High School. A music appreciation scholarship from Evansville Underground Music for five hundred dollars and an Evansville Angels Scholarship for a thousand.
There's a motion, is there a second? Second, any discussion? Matt, let's vote. Motion carries seven zero. Next, I'll entertain a motion to withdraw from the dissolution of Dane County. Next, I'll entertain a motion to withdraw from the dissolution of the Dane County School Consortium.
Yep, so two separate motions here. One to withdraw and then one to authorize me to vote on dissolution later down the road.
Make a motion for the withdrawal of the Evansville Community School District from the Dane County School Consortium effective on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, in accordance with the VCSC's bylaws and intergovernmental agreement.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I do just have one question that I don't know if you know the answer to this, and it might be a bigger thing, so it doesn't have to be. Why did we join that one when Milton and Edgerton have one? Do you know any background on that?
Yep, no, great question. Milton and Edgerton were actually in one that was, Blackhawk Technical College was the fiscal agent. And they both got out of that because of the fees that we were just talking about were so high that they were not seeing, of the eleven hundred dollars that were coming in, the fees, they were seeing very little of that back in the district. So they broke off and created that, I believe, in two thousand fourteen.
We joined this in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, I don't know what the justification was.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was back.
They're, like I said, Milton and Edgerton, it's basically they run their Carl Perkins grant and then youth apprenticeship grant through that, nothing else. Whereas we talked about like the Future Quest and some of the courses that you could have gotten through DC.
Maybe more offered to me to present. Okay, thank you.
Is that also part of the Craftsman character, too? Is that a separate?
Separate.
Separate?
Yep.
Any other questions? Does Matt, do you have a preference which motion it is?
We gotta do both. We gotta do both. Yeah.
There's no other questions. Let's vote on the first. Motion carries seven zero. Next, I'll entertain a motion to give Mr. Perry authority to vote on a dissolution.
Make a motion to authorize the district administrator to vote on dissolution of the Dane County School Consortium on behalf of the school board prior to the end of the fiscal year on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
The second, any discussion? Now, let's vote. Motion carries seven zero. Next is consent. Does anybody want anything removed? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent.
I move to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Let's vote. Motion carries seven zero. Next, there's the future agendas. Anybody want anything added or removed or changed?
Just remember, only one meeting in March. And then at this, we'll know who will be seated at the board on the twenty-third, and we'll say goodbye to Dana and John.
I don't know if you're supposed to clap for that or not, but. Cupcakes.
All right. If there's nothing else to discuss, then.
For the next to last time.
My second.
Second. Motion carries seven zero.